We're going to call to order the November 18th meeting of the Westford Select Board. And we're going to start with a pledge as we do, led tonight by Sean.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is open forum, and Kristin, we have some exciting people to recognize.
It's nice to see such a big crowd in our room. Would you like to recognize them?
I would. So we would like to offer congratulations to the Westford Senior Center billiards players for the Mass Senior Travel Eight Ball League Northeast Division Champions. Congratulations. If you would, if you'd like to come up, we'd like to take a picture with you. Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Just don't trip.
Try it.
Okay, how do we do this?
You got everyone?
Good, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming by.
I do want to say that they're more than just a championship billiard team. They really take care of each other, and they have such a great camaraderie, and we're just real lucky to have this program and just to see many more participants coming aboard, and we appreciate how welcoming you all are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We'd also like to recognize another star athlete in Westford, the Westford Academy's very own Abigail Hennessy, who captured the girls' Division One Championship in the MIA Divisional Cross Country Meet on Saturday, November 8th. She actually won the championship this past weekend, so she's won both the Division Champion and the State Championship. So congratulations to Abigail. Okay, any open forum items from the board tonight? Anything from the public? Yeah, please, please come on up, and I do want to mention that because we have our state reps, state rep and state senator later, we're going to have a very short time with them, we may not have a chance for a public comment during that time. So if you had a public comment related to that, now might be a better time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Diane Wood, and tonight I'm speaking in favor of the Westford League Women Voters in calling attention to the event, tomorrow's event in Burlington for the Bearing at ICE event, that's tomorrow. I want to read a little statement. So the League of Women Voters of Westford First Parish Church, United Democracy Action Committee, and St. Mark's Episcopal Church, along with support from other local organizations and religious institutions, are inviting residents to join the Bearing Witness at ICE demonstration in Burlington tomorrow, November 19th, from 11:00 to 1:00, outside the ICE field office. Participants gather peacefully each week to stand in solidarity with immigrants in affirmed justice and human dignity. Cup holders will meet at 10:15 at the First Parish parking lot on Wednesday, tomorrow. Others are welcome to meet directly at the site in Burlington. Look for our "Westford and Protect Due Process" sign. We invite you all as a community to join us and unite Westford's voices on these issues. Thank you.
May I say one thing before I leave?
Absolutely, please. Do you please come to the mic and...
I just want to thank Jennifer.
If you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone, people who are listening from home can only hear us if we're on the mics. And also, if you could say your name, please.
Oh, I'm Jerry Monstrel, I'm the captain of the pool team.
Great, thank you, Jerry.
And I do want to thank Jennifer and her entire staff for the awesome job they do at the Senior Center. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Just with the holidays amongst us, I just wanted to recognize...
Jennifer, would you mind just introducing yourself?
Oh, sure, yes, yes. So my name is Jennifer Claro, and I work as the Director at the Cameron Senior Center. So tonight, I just wanted to recognize the Holiday Assistance Program. This past Saturday, we had over 125 families that received food, 105 seniors also received food, and 180 children will be receiving gifts over the holidays. And I just wanted to thank the community for their tremendous generosity for donating to the Westford...I keep wanting to say housing, sorry, I know there's affordable housing meeting, but sorry. For the Holiday Assistance Program, we were able to help more families this year, as well as more seniors and more children, and over $36,000 was raised for this program this year. So thank you to the Westford community for thinking about others during this holiday season.
Jennifer, if people want to make an additional donation, what's the best way to do that?
So right now, they can just make donations to Westford Remembers, as well as to the Westford Food Pantry.
Great, thank you very much. Any other public comments? Welcome, Megan.
Hey, Megan O'Connell, 44 South Chelmsford Road. Two quick comments on two unrelated topics. One is, given that tonight there's going to be a discussion on tax classification, I just want to remind the board and put it in your, in the back of your minds, that it might be good for the town to start thinking about residential exemptions over the next year, especially as we're going to have many hundreds of new apartments come online in the next few years. It might be an appropriate time for the town to start having that discussion. The second thing, just want to follow up on communication that I sent to the board yesterday. Again, with the Zone and Board of Appeals appointment that's on the agenda for later tonight, it had been thought that there was one alternate seat open. Turns out, and Kristin confirmed today, that there are actually two. There was a third seat that was authorized by the town meeting 20 years ago, and given that there are only four VAFs received in the last two years, and only two of those actually came before the board to interview, it might be appropriate for the board to appoint both of them. Thank you.
Just want to remind members of the public that we currently have a survey out for pay-as-you-throw or hybrid pay-as-you-throw system, so if you have not taken that survey, please try to do so this week. Mike Edwards will be giving a presentation to the Select Board next Tuesday evening regarding the findings of that report and a potential program to enter into, so we'd appreciate if we could get all the feedback possible. Thank you.
Okay, looks like we're ready to move on. So we're going to move to the consent agenda. Request to approve the following: the town common banstand, the event is an activity display, the applicant is Kelly Olson, the dates are November 28th through December 31st, 2025, and the time is continuous. Also, an event for menorah display, the applicant is Shabbat of Nashua Valley, the dates are December 12th through December 23rd, 2025, and the time is continuous. We also have an event, the community Hanukkah celebration, the applicant is a Shabbat of Nashua Valley, the date is December 14th, 2025, and the time is 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. We also have a special license request, the Farm Festival of Lights, the applicant is Good Pickin' Farms, Sandra Hevy, the date is November 29th, 2025, the time is 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., location is 5 and 6 Gould Road. And we have a van request for Live for Live, the applicant is Jody Marchand, the dates are September 4th through September 14th, 2026, and the location is First Parish Church. Any questions on any of those from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're all here together tonight, so we get to do hand-raised vote. Okay, we are now at, ready to open the 707 public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, first public hearing tonight, and we have a few of them, is Mass Electric doing business with National Grid. It's a Concord Road pole change, and if we want to pull up, welcome. Are you Dave?
Yes.
Welcome, Dave.
Hi.
We'll be welcome, we'll be joined by Dave Boucher of...
Boucher.
Boucher, thank you.
Yep.
And Kyle Fox is also online as VP Deputy Director.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind explaining the first Concord Road pole change?
Yep. David Boucher, Senior Designer, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, North Yanover. The first one that I'm here for, out of the three, 31210090, is near 122 Concord Road, near Tallard. What we're proposing is to place a new pole, 70-50, as shown on the diagram, in order to place a new pole top recloser, a new device that we use for, it opens up and it isolates outages, and we're putting them up everywhere, and it helps us to restore power to a lot of customers while we work on what gets damaged. There've been several of them, I think, I think I was here, was online a couple of weeks ago or a month ago for one, and there's two more here tonight that we're asking for. Again, this is, as shown, if you had any questions on that particular spot, or...
Any questions from the board on the first one tonight? If there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
We need, actually need members of the public.
Oh, any public comment on the first pole location change, or pole location addition tonight? Anybody online?
I can't see anyone online now.
Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are going to open the next public hearing, but I think there's been a request for a continuance.
This is the Hildreth.
Well, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, so I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing for the 709 agenda.
Seven.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this is the Hildreth Street pole location?
Yes, I had a good conversation with Kyle from your engineering today about this particular petition, and he showed me some things that needed to get corrected, and so we would ask you respectfully to rescind our petition tonight and schedule another date that we can come back for, this particular one.
Now, Kristin, in order for a continuance, do we need to continue to a date specific?
Right, so our recommendation is if you're going to be going for the same area, if that meets the requirements, we could continue the public hearing, and then we wouldn't need to re-advertise. But if this is going to be a totally different request, then we would close the public hearing and you would reapply, so it's really up to your...
I'll tell you what we have, is it is, it is the same area, it's just, we moved the pole, instead of placing it 50 feet from another pole, it's going to be about 80 feet from another pole. That's just kind of the idea of what it is. So I would expect that it's the same obutters, et cetera, if that's, that's one thing that I...
So why don't we leave the public hearing open? If you determine that there are additional obutters, then we would converse...
If you did, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
With the new one. There will be a new drawing with new wording on it.
That's fine.
So I wanted to let you know that, if you want to continue it, knowing that before you schedule it, receive that, that way, you know, you can obviously...
When do you anticipate receiving the new, us receiving the new drawing?
No idea. Today, I sent it to the person who needs to make the changes, and I'm sure they'll be all over it before the end of the week at least, and then maybe by the early next week, we can get that to you.
So we have another meeting next Tuesday, and then our next meeting is December 9th. So what would your preference be?
You might as well go to the 9th, just to make sure we get it in. I don't want to, it's not something that needs to happen.
December 9th, and let me just double-check if we have any other public hearings scheduled for that time. Just don't want to double-book one of the times, just getting one of these. I think we could do, let's do 7:10 on December 9th, if that works for you.
Yeah, I think that sounds great. So we need a motion to vote for that.
We need a motion to continue the public hearing to December 9th at 7:00 p.m. for the Hildreth Street matter.
Do I have that motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll now entertain a motion, and we don't close that one because we've continued it. Okay. So now I want a motion to open the 711 public, we had 711?
Yes.
711 public hearing. Again, for National Grid, this is for a pole location on Concord Road.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, Dave?
Okay, again, this one is 31200227, and the drawing we've shown, that we've provided, you'll see that it's near 174 Concord Road, near 1 Tech Valley Drive. And again, we were asking for a new spot that's between two existing poles, pole number 121-75 would sit there right, I mean, get right up there on the screen nicely, right there in the intersection, and would be able to place a new pole top recloser on the top of that one, too.
Okay, any, any questions from the board on this one? Any questions from the public? Any questions online?
No.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, one more, folks, we've got 712 public hearing. This is for the National Grid pole, our location, Hartford Road. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
Okay, this one is number 31199633. Again, a half pole, we call them half poles between two poles, a brand-new one that we want to place on Hartford Road, near number 25 Hartford Road. On the top of that one is going to be a communications antenna or a third-party antenna. It's not one of National Grid's devices, but it's someone else that needs that, so it's near number 27 Hartford Road. If you see fit, it would enable us to go forward with placing that one.
Any questions from the board on this one? Yep, John?
Who's the third party?
I don't know. I did look at it quickly today because I didn't realize that it was going to be something different, but I believe it's, I don't want to speculate, but I'm going to guess it's one of those, they look like tubes that you see on top of poles sometimes, no? And those are, I think those are like relays of some sort that cell phone companies have up there.
So how high is that going to be?
Oh, it'll be right on top of the pole, like the very tip-top of it, yeah. That's why they usually place them.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other questions from the public?
We do have one online.
Okay.
Mr. Jeffries.
Welcome.
How much money is National Grid making on this placement?
Bob, do you mind just introducing yourself quick?
I'm Bob Jeffries, 13 Boston Road.
Okay. Thanks, so the question is to you, Dave?
And what was it, sir?
I think, Bob, you were asking how much...
How much money is National Grid charging the unknown, undesignated person who's putting something on top of this pole?
Do you have that information, Dave?
No, I do not know what, what the, that is.
So my comment to the town is, you keep using town land to provide for free locations for National Grid to make unknown amounts of money from private entities who I assume are competitive businesses. That's it?
I think that the town, correct me if I'm wrong, you may know and may not know, the town collects taxes on each and every one of the poles that we have on the ground.
Yeah, the town collects taxes for me, too, but I don't get free use of town land, do I?
Okay.
I want to know, as a profit-making option of National Grid, how do you continue to get free use of town land when it's no longer a condition of monopoly granted back in the '30s? And I want to see the actual contract between National Grid and the town of Westford concerning the use of town land, and is there any compensation? Because the fact that you pay property taxes means absolutely nothing. Everybody here pays property taxes.
Okay. Dave, it sounds like a question that's for probably someone at National Grid other than Dave, so...
Yes, and we also have our chief assessor here this evening, too, if there's any questions about the taxes that they pay, because he's preparing to give the tax classification hearing in a few moments.
Okay. I think Bob's asking a little bit different questions, so we could put in a request to National Grid to understand what the contract is for this pole.
I can, I can contact or find out who the liaison is for the town.
Okay, that'd be very helpful, thank you.
If I, it's not she, Matt, is there anybody familiar with the liaison at all on the council? No. I will find out, and I'll see if I can...
Yeah, Dave, you could share that with Kristin, that'd be great.
We have a contact for our government affairs person, Curtis Davis.
Curtis Davis, there you go.
Is he the person that he would get back to us on this?
Yes, absolutely. Try calling him or contacting him.
Could you relay that message to me?
Yeah, I will, I will. But yeah, that was the person.
Okay. Any, any other questions online, Kristin?
I don't see anything else online.
Okay. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion to close the public session.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we've got one that's not a public hearing, which is a request to approve the Order of Taking for the West Street and North Main Street pedestrian improvement project.
You're all set for this.
Oh, yeah, okay. Good night, everyone.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Paul Ster at Town Engineer for the town of Westford, and this is a continuation of our staff assist to the Pedestrian Safety Committee, who is just building sidewalks all over town, and now we're looking at one at the corner of West Street and East Prescott, West Prescott, one of the Prescotts, and East Prescott, thank you, Patty. And we need this land because as a part of this pedestrian safety improvement, servicing largely the population at Granville Woods and those students who are walking back and forth to the school at Blanchard and further down to the day school, we need to square up that intersection so we can get pedestrians across the road safer. And in order to do that, we've been working very closely with the St. Catherine's Church. The staff there has been phenomenal, and are working with us, negotiating an easement on their land so that we can move the road over and build our sidewalk. In order to do that, we need the board to sign an order of taking that'll be recorded at the registry.
Thanks, Paul, it was a great explanation. Any, any questions for Paul on this? We've seen this project evolve several steps.
Yeah.
Any questions from the public about this? Okay, if there are any questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the Order of Taking for the West Street and North Main Street Pedestrian Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
There's a document at your seat that everyone needs to sign this evening.
Okay, I'll make sure we...
So make sure we do that.
We'll get it done.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'll now entertain a motion to open the public hearing, this one being for the classification of real and personal property tax.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we welcome Will Nazir, our Chief Assessor. Welcome, Will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight with me, I have the Assistant Assessor, Steve Clark. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to say thank you to the board members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to present the annual tax classification hearing. The presentation is a summary and a culmination of the department's work for the fiscal, for the current fiscal year of 2026. We began this process back in January of this year, because it's a certification year. Couple of quick things, as I mentioned, Steve is the Assistant Assessor, the other staff members are Ann Seidel, Nicolette King, and our board members couldn't be here tonight, but Titus Palmer, you probably know Titus, Diane Holmes, and the newest member is Deana Donahue. And with that, I can go right into the presentation. So as I said, this is a certification year for the town, so that differs from a interim year. So every, every fifth year in Massachusetts, each city and town is required to do a certification, and it's kind of an audit of the, of our department to make sure that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and that is valuing property fairly and equitably. So if you could, I'm sorry, could you flip back, Mike? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead to the next one. I was saying the open member position is now Deana Donahue. So the year starts, everything's assessed as of January 1st, and we're looking at for fiscal '26, so we look at calendar year '24 for information, so that would be the sales for residential and parts, some of the, some of our property types are small, we have a small number of sales, so we have to go into calendar year '25 for some of them. For the commercial industrial properties, we use, we send out polls or information, we ask them to return, so we get an idea of income and expenses to, that's a different approach of valuing properties, looking at their income and expenses to come up with a value in conjunction with a sales approach. And that's all from 2022, and, excuse me, 2024. And the personal property values, so we use cost tables and written returns called forms of lists, and that would be the businesses sending, sending back their information to us, and we decide what's taxable, what's not taxable, and again, that's from 2024. So this is kind of a macro look from year to year, from fiscal year '25 to fiscal year '26, going from left to right, are the property classes. So you have, you have five property classes, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal. So the change is almost 500, or 450 million in the residential, and that's about a 7% increase over from year to year, from '25 to '26. And the commercial, it's a smaller increase of 4%, a little over 4%. Industrial went up about 10%, and the personal, 4.4. The overall for the town is almost a 7% increase, and I did include the, as I usually do, the residential, real estate exempt value, which is 2.3%. So exempt would be anything non-taxable. So those, those properties are still adjusted, that would be all our government buildings, that would be churches, that would be anything, anybody that's not taxed is exempt. Okay. So just a little bit more of a drill down. So our Class 1 residential properties, we have over 6,500 single-family homes, that makes up 75% of the, of the property class, and 1,487 residential condominiums. There is a mistake on there, it says commercial class 26 parcels, it's supposed to be 263, but that, the commercial increased by four, a little over 4%. Industrial, as I said, was 10 with 113 parcels, and our personal property class is 200, and those are, again, that's, that's business accounts, and that went up about 4.5%. So some of the trends and some of my comments, so the increase in the, in the single-family property, the parcel increase from year to year is 19, and that would be new, new homes. Condominiums stayed the same, neutral, and we did increase the commercial, commercial parcel count by one, and the industrial stayed the same. Personal property, so personal property, again, that, that word is really business property, so we have seven areas of personal property. It's a very small number we have in, relatively speaking, in Westford, but there are local utilities that we value, EverSource and National Grid, then the state gives us values on other utility properties, such as Tennessee Pipeline, and then the local businesses, your mom-and-pop stores, your, everybody at Cornerstone, Westford Valley Marketplace, and those types of, those places make up 15%. And we also have two tax agreements, and that's the solar, Westford Solar Agreements. This slide just shows the 10-year history, so it's the current year of '26, and the previous nine years, and a percentage change from the previous year. So we've gone up almost 7% in taxable value. Interesting to see, the jump from the certification last time was, excuse me, wasn't... Interesting to see the jump from the certification last time was, excuse me, wasn't, you know, wasn't what we had this time. We went almost, what is it, about 600 million last time? And this time, the jump is, is, is an extra year in there, but it's, it's over 2.5, 2.5 billion. So it's quite a, quite a jump. So the tax levy, it gets down to, what is the tax levy? The tax levy is the dollar amount the community raises through real and personal property taxes each fiscal year. It's the largest revenue source for most communities, it certainly is in Westford. The estimated, excuse me, tax levy for fiscal '26 is $99,595,659. So new growth is something we add to our equation. Tax-based levy growth, notice new growth. New growth is just what it sounds like, it's new construction, value increase or items not previously assessed. So we take that growth amount, we convert it to a tax amount, and it becomes part of the Proposition 2.5 calculation. So the new growth value was $66,142,788. It translated to $890,944 in actual tax dollars, so that's, that's part of the calculation for Proposition 2.5. So simply, you take the value of what you come up with a value, you use last year's tax rate, and that becomes this year's tax-based levy growth. Current year levy new growth, so where does it come from? Well, the lion's share of it comes from single families, which is no surprise because that's who we have the most of. In addition, from top to bottom, so it's single family condominiums. There's other, other residential that is a very, very small amount that we added. And on the left-hand side, the class, so that's important too. That's the Class 1 is residential, Class 3 is commercial, 4 is industrial, and 5 is personal. So the personal property is kind of a wild card because sometimes we don't know what, what the utilities, they put in new substations or new equipment, and so those, sometimes we don't know what the, what that new growth is because that's, that's given to us through their, their forms of the list. So the new growth from year to year, so I've kind of split out the current year, the residential, and the commercial, industrial, personal, and again, multiplied by last year's rate of $13.47 per thousand is $890,943. So the previous year's numbers are there, '25 through '21, and we're averaging about $921,000. So the new growth, it's a dollar increase in the levy limit that reflects additions to the community, community's tax base since the last fiscal year. So you'll see on an upcoming slide that proposition, where that fits into the Proposition 2.5 calculation. I like to show a bigger array of the, of the new growth and where, where we, where we were, excuse me. So that gives you a full complement of 20-year history on the new growth. So the average is about a million, and you can see some of those big years, especially the last '20 and '21, which is, '21 is on the screen, but that's typically, or that, that's been from the new apartments. The previous ones, it's too far back for me to know what that growth was, 1.8, 1.7, 1.2. But anyway, that's a good, that's a good history. So when we do the tax levy rendering, so that we take last year's levy limit of $94 million, we add any amended new growth, I didn't have any this year, total it up, then we multiply Proposition 2.5, that's where that 2.5 comes from. So you multiply 2.5% times the $94 million. We add in the new growth, we add in any override if we had any, and we come up with a new subtotal. We also add in the excluded debt, so that's any of the exclusions of debt items. And then we come up with a, a maximum allowable levy limit, maximum allowable tax dollars we can get. And in this case, we're just below that, that $14,000. So we are, we are just about at full capacity with the 2.5% at maximizing the allowable tax levy limit. So what we do next is we need, we're value people in the assessing department. We're trained as appraisers and assessors, but we convert that value to tax. So we work throughout the year to refine the, the values, both personal and real. We submit value to the Division of Local Services, and they approve our value and new growth. And then I work with the finance director, the accountant, and the treasurer-collector. We submit the state recap documents, we hold the hearing, which is tonight, and the select board makes the decision on how tax, how the tax burden will be subjected in Westford. So first step is we establish the values, so we have approved values, that's the approved value, $7 billion. 7.5 billion is what we have for taxable value. And again, I just put in the exempt value, just so you know how much we have. You can see, the other thing that's kind of a stark contrast is the residential. We don't have, we have zero open space, so that 90% is, that's nine, that's all residential, 100% residential. So that's all mostly single families. And then the commercial, industrial, personal, I mean, we dip below the 10%. We were, we were higher, but the residential is just far outpacing the commercial, industrial, personal. The next step is, is just a simple math equation. We take the, the levy amount and we divide it by the taxable value, and we come up with a tax rate. So this is an estimated tax rate, it could change a penny or two when we submit, but it's, it's pretty good. $13.11, so the average single-family value in Westford is $852,100, times 13, 11. So the average real estate tax bill without CPA is $11,171. So in this slide, I'm just showing various value amounts with that tax rate, and I've also included the CPA, so you see what the total annual charge is. I've also put in on the left-hand side, you'll see it says average residential condo value and average single-family value, and their corresponding taxes in CPA and total amounts. So basically, whether it's a million dollars, if it's a single rate that's chosen, a million in residential or a million in commercial, it's, it's over 13, it's almost 13,500. That's an unapproved tax rate. It'll, we, after tonight, I'll submit everything along with the other recap documents and get an approved tax rate. And I've also made a note about the tax billing. So July through December is a preliminary billing. It's determined, it's taking 50% of last year and applying it for quarter one and quarter two. So that's your August and November bill, and your January through June is the, is what we call an actual bill. And we finalize the tax amount, and we set the tax rate and the tax budget. So those, that bill, the actual bill is your February and May billing. Again, just trying to show historic value tax bill percentages increases from the previous year. So there's a lot of information there, but generally speaking, I like to look at the top and the bottom. So if you look at the top all the way across, again, our, our single families have increased. If you look from 2017 to 2026, we've increased the number of single families in town. The average has, has gone up quite a bit, which isn't surprising. We have some double-digit changes of value amounts for a few years. But the overall change, if you look at the, the average, you know, about 4% increase, that's pretty good. That's a pretty good adjustment each year. The next step is determine a split tax rate. So this is the decision tonight, at least one of the decisions. So we don't really talk about choosing a tax rate, we talk about what's called a residential factor. So a residential factor, if we, if it's less than one, it reduces the tax share of residential and open space. And as you reduce the residential, you, you increase the commercial, industrial, and personal. So that's, that would be a shift, you'd be shifting the tax burden, you'd be collecting the same amount of money, but you're shifting a tax burden. The commercial, industrial, personal taxpayers can't pay more than 150%, so that would be the highest shift you could make. You'll see it on the next slide. And the residential, you have to pay, it has to be a maximum of 65%, or, excuse me, minimum of 65% of the full and fair cash value, that's FF CB. And we're not in a community that can go to 1.75, some communities can. That's depending on the class breakdown, value breakdown. So last year, the chosen rate, chosen residential factor was one. The tax rate was $13.47 for both, for everybody, it was the same. So on the next slide, I'll show the increments of a split tax rate, if you're interested in that. So the next, the step five would be determine us the two tax rates for the town. So what I'm showing on the top line in red is the single rate, and then if you shift the burden by 10%, 20, 30, and 40, or 50%, you can see the tax rates change as they go. They, they change higher for the commercial, industrial, and lower for the residential. So you're changing the shares in the columns on the right, the residential share and the CIP share. It's just how it's done, but that, that shows you the, the difference. So what is that, a 12-cent difference? If you shift it, you're kind of at a, at a disadvantage because you don't have really a lot of commercial, industrial, personal to, to go, to go that route for the amount of change you would make. So if you, and there's another, another thing about open space, if you do decide to go with open space, that would change the tax rates altogether too. So the last step is, is to, is to choose whether you want to have a single rate or you want to have a split rate, and then there's other options that I prepared in the past, but not tonight. I really haven't delved into the small commercial or the residential exemptions or the open space discount. I think we did have, I did do a presentation, not last year, the year before, on the residential exemption. It wasn't something that the board at the time was interested in. So that's your, your choice, I think you can go to the one more slides. So you're, you make the choices tonight. The town clerk, Lauren Shaw, will confirm the meeting and the voting tomorrow. And then I will submit the choices for state approval tomorrow as well or the next day. I think that's about, I think that's the last one.
Okay. Great, thank you, thank you, Will.
Okay.
Questions from the board? Yeah, Chris?
Can you clarify for me again, the open space, what does that entail and why do we not have any value in that?
So an open space is a, is a property type that we, that's a designation that you can have. We have open space, but we don't designate it with a, by changing, putting a tax rate or any value in there for the open space. So it's something you could do. There's, there's no reason why you'd have to do it. Most towns don't have open space. I, I don't know the numbers on that, but a lot of, a lot of towns don't use the open space category.
So if we were to have that, who would pay it? I mean, mostly open space is probably owned by the town.
Yeah, so it's, so it's, right, it's, it's a minimum amount of land that would go in there. So I don't, I don't see any reason why you'd want to have open space.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Sean?
Thanks, Paul. I was curious, when was the last time that Westford actually had a split tax rate? Did you know?
I go back to 2000, I don't see any split tax rate. We, Westford, prior to my coming here, had a, a small commercial exemption. So there was a differentiation in the last 20 years that I remember seeing. Maybe somebody else could speak, maybe Dan could speak to that, but I, I don't, I don't think we've, we've had one at least for the last 20 years.
Okay. And if I'm doing my math right, the difference between, if the CIP shift, right, of percentages for a residential house between 13, .11, and 12, .99, so that would, so even if we did shift the tax rate and give the, put the onus on the, our commercial properties, right, that would equate to, what, a few hundred dollars worth of savings for the average household in Westford in taxes?
Right, yeah, I think it's, I think it's probably less than 100, somewhere around that, whereas the increase on the commercial, industrial goes up quite a bit. So, you know, two, what, a dollar something, I like 40, something like that. So, yeah, it's, it's not, if you, if you, if I did out the numbers that way, it's just not, you're really lumping a lot of burden on the, the, the businesses, and you're getting minimal gain, you know, you're lessening the burden on the residential for not a lot, really.
Certainly for the average household.
Correct.
That's, that's exactly right, Sean. So we did a Citizens Action Committee to look at the split tax rate maybe seven or eight years ago. And, and that's exactly what's happened, because we have such a high percentage of residential, even if you max out the commercial change, you make a very small difference. So it's a small benefit to the residential, and it's a huge problem for the commercial. So most of the people we compete with on 110 have a, don't have a split tax rate, have a flat tax rate. And so the concern was, you're giving a very small gain to the residential, a big problem for the commercial, and a not competitive change for commercial, because now, you know, you'd be deciding, do I want to pay something like a 13% tax or a 20% tax when I relocate my business? So that was the thinking of the, of the working group at the time.
Yeah.
And that working group also recommended doing away with the small business exemption because it was a lot of paperwork and confusion for like a very small dollar benefit at the time.
Any questions about this? Any questions from the public? I know we had one question, yeah, please. Dennis, Dennis, while you're coming, if you both want to come up to the mic, if you both have something to offer, that'd be great. And I do want to recognize the, the correspondence that we had on this question. So we were asked a question, Will, is it possible to create different tiers within different types?
different types of residential? Basically, I think the, the person who asked the question was saying, is it possible to have a higher assessment on apartments, for example, than it is on, on regular residential? Can you, can you tier it like that? Is that something that's in our power?
No, that, that is not. You can't, you can't differentiate within the class. It's under Mass General Law, Chapter 40, says that there are five, there are four classes, and personal property class five. So you can't, you can't, I, I don't know how you do it in, you know, arbitrarily, you'd say, well, you, you pick a threshold, and you'd say people below that. But it's not allowable. That's, that's the, that's the thing. That's not allowable to change.
That's what I understand, too. It's not within, it's not within our power to create separate tiers within the residential class.
Right. So there, there are other communities that have said the same thing, and they have, say, you know, communities of 5,000-unit apartment complexes. And people always say, well, why can't we put the commercial? So anything that people live in, that habitate, falls under the residential, whether it's a single unit, or it's, it's 5,000 units, it falls under the residential. So if you have a split tax rate, those apartment complexes, whether they're in the big cities or wherever they are, fall, and you, and you have a, a bigger, you have a split tax rate, they fall into, they still fall into the residential.
Yeah. Thanks, Will. Dennis?
Thank you. Dennis Galvin, 90, Concord Road. This is a, a lot of numbers, a lot of things that are kind of arcane to a lot of people. I'd like to see if we could boil it down. It sounds to me, from what I'm hearing, that the board has essentially two choices, decide whether to go with a single rate or a split rate. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess the question I have for you is for tax, is for taxpayers, under the single rate, what's the percentage change in the tax rate for the, for the residential homeowner? And under the split rate, what is the change in, for the, for the homeowner?
You're talking actual dollar amount?
Well, percentage-wise.
If you, if you, I'm sorry, Mike, if you go back, if you go back to the split tax rate screen.
It moves a little slow.
Yeah. So, right there. So if you did the ma, say you went with the max, and you use a million dollars. So a million dollars for the max for a residential property would be $12,990. And if you did the max, it went across, so for a commercial building, it would be $20,660.
So Dennis, I think if you're asking across the whole split, it looks like the difference is, yeah. If you, if you had a million-dollar house, the difference would be, yeah, 100, it would be 12,990 versus 13, 11.
So, but that's not, all right, so that's it is. So how about if you, if you do the unitary rate? How much of a change is that?
Say it again, what do you mean?
The single rate. That was the split rate, right?
Be 13,110.
And the, yes, all right. 50,000 is the, is the single rate, and then 12,000 is the, is the split rate?
With a maximum split.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Which again, equated, I mean, we just did the math. It's the average household, it's going to be less than $100 worth of tax savings.
Right.
Right.
Is that $100, you mean, overall?
Yeah, annually.
Annually?
Right.
Okay, well, I would just like, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if you don't mind giving your name and your.
Oh, I apologize. It's the first time I've come to a meeting.
Yeah, no problem.
My name is Dale Knowles. I live on Eight Minute Men Lane. And I didn't know all the actual numbers, but I guess my general opinion is to go for the split tax. I know it's not much money, but in the, in a time when we're paying exorbitant costs for everything in our lives, you know, right starting from groceries, I think any benefit you can give back to people who live in single homes, especially those with families and young children, I think is worth it. I look at businesses as they have a much bigger budget than a single-family home. And I may be speaking out of turn, but I mean, I don't own a business, but I just think they have a lot more money to work with. And as far as like new businesses coming in, I don't know where you'd build them. I mean, I've lived here a long time, and I think every inch seems to be taken up. So I guess I would ask that you really consider, I know it's not much money, but it may be a lot to an individual who's, you know, scrimping by. And I have a, a neighbor who is living paycheck to paycheck, and even that less than $100 would make a difference to her. So I ask you really to consider what the impact is on the families and the people like myself, you know, who own a home. And, you know, we're all paying a lot of money for everything. So please give that a thought. Down, down to the individual person and family. That's who you'll be affecting. Okay? Thank you.
Paul Nodish, 17, Buckingham Drive. I just have a question on the numbers of the chart. You know, at, at a factor of one for residential is 13.11. We go to 1.10, which should shift some of the burden away from the residential, and it actually goes up? That doesn't make sense to me. Can you explain that?
So the overall, the numbers are, are going down, the 12.
But from one to 1.10, from one to 1.1, it goes up?
Yeah, I have the same question, Will.
It doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it looks like there's a calculation.
Okay, there might be.
And would, would, and if that's true, it potentially changes whole $100 calculation thing. So I mean, those numbers just don't make sense to me.
Well, I don't, I, I can't fix it right now, but I'd.
I guess, I would suggest that before the selectmen make a decision, they get an update on that number so that they know what they're deciding.
Can you, so first of all, I just want to make sure that 1311 is correct and the error is in the subsequent table.
Yep, the 1311 is correct.
Okay. So if we, I guess, Kristin, I don't know what we think here, but it should be possible to recalculate this pretty quickly. It's simple math, bro. So can we just ask Will to go recalculate this?
I can go, I can go do it real quick, if you want me to do that.
Yeah. Do you understand why it was wrong?
Yep, I understand.
Okay. So I guess, why don't we?
Will, can, when you do that, can you shoot Mike a copy so he can put it up on the screen?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So let's see, do we leave the?
So we'll leave the public hearing open. We'll be continuing it through this meeting. We'll be finishing it this meeting.
Okay, great. So next up is a visit and discussion with our representatives, our Sierra and Senator Cronin.
Well, can we, you want to start that, and then?
Yeah, because we need to get the number before we go.
Absolutely. I'm just thinking, we're already behind.
Yeah, but they're, we're, they have a cap at the end.
Yep, I hear you.
So we're gonna have to push Will back.
Yep, that's fine.
Welcome, gentlemen.
How are you?
They're doing great.
Good to see you, buddy, Will.
Good to see you. Sorry you got trapped downtown. Sounds like you had to staple yourself to your desk tonight.
Yeah, we, we had kind of, a little bit of a later session today, and I'm, ugh, been battling, family's been, had like a virus or whatever the last four or five days. So we're chugging around, getting through it.
All right.
Thanks for having us. The last, I guess like a year ago, when we were here last, we had some conversation and some questions about remote town meeting.
Yep.
And I kind of wanted to jump back into a couple of things. One, let's address remote town meeting now. I know I've had a number of conversations with, with Bill Taffel, as my office has, and conversations with other folks, you know, post-pandemic, kind of how we do business, if there's something that we could do on remote town meeting that people are interested in, that, that could actually pass in the legislature, that, that folks are interested in. So I think what I said last session, I think John and I are both in agreement, and that's the fact that when there is a resolution, or a decision made by the select board or town meeting to do such things, then our job as legislators was to be, to move forward on a home rule, or to, you know, support what the town's interested in doing when it comes to changing municipal government. But I also want to give you the reality of where we are. And, and I think that's a big reason you guys kind of wanted us to come in tonight. So the first is, there's four bills that have been filed this political, this legislative session. One is the town of Concord, one is in the town of Wayland, and another's in Lexington. And so the bills that have been filed right now, two are actually in a study, which means they're not moving this year, that they're not moving forward. And the other two, I would anticipate, will probably go that direction as well. And I'll tell you why. A lot of the concerns they've had from legislators has been on security. It's been on validity and confirmation of the same person voting each time. Cost of maintenance has come up quite a bit, logistics, guidance for towns on how to proceed. So those have been some serious issues that have, that have come forward as we've, you know, explored and done our research on, you know, the future of remote town, open town meeting, if you will. I talked to MMA today as well, and the, the temperature and the appetite seems a little difficult at this point in time. So I, I, again, as your, as your representatives, we take your guidance when it comes to, if there's a statement you want to make that, that Westford indeed wants to file a bill that includes, and be included with these four other individ, towns that are proceeding, you know, forward with trying to do this. But I don't see, you know, I don't see this passing this legislative session. I think that's kind of what you wanted to hear.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the kind of update we're interested in. So for members of the public that are joining in progress, we were asked by town meeting to basically explore options and pursue this. So we're, we're being diligent to that town meeting request. Last, we, time the select board sort of discussed and took a position, we said we want to watch carefully the four communities that you mentioned, and if it looks like they're breaking through and establishing a path that we might follow, then we might gear up and take some action. So by telling us that, that there isn't really a path opening that we could trailblaze behind, we could be moved behind their trailblazers, I guess what I mean, it sounds like that's, that's not developing right now.
That's not developing right now, Tom, but I, I, it doesn't mean that these conversations won't continue. There certainly is going to be, you know, when you talk about, we can, you know, certainly talk later about the Municipal Empowerment Act. But, you know, I, I do certainly believe that I want to be realistic with folks in where things are going. And again, you know, as your representatives, you know, we'll bring any sort of statement or resolution forward, if that's what you're looking for, even filing a bill. But we don't, we certainly don't move forward on things like that unless there's any sort of consensus or resolution from the select board, and especially town meeting.
Yeah, I think the path you mentioned at the very beginning, which would be for us to pursue a home rule petition, is what we would do if we saw a path forward. And it sounds like we're still kind of waiting and watching to see if a path forward develops on this topic.
I do. I, I think that's still very much in the, in the early stages. I, again, the, some of the issues that were brought up, that concerns that legislators have, I think that has, has really sort of stalled things.
Okay. Yeah, Chris?
Thank you so much for the update, Jim. You did bring up some really important issues. So my question to you is, what is the state doing to try to resolve some of those issues? I mean, you spoke of Wayland, for example. They've had this ask-out for years, and years, and years. So I think it's only becoming more and more of a requirement that we offer this type of voting to residents in these communities. We need to solve these issues. How is the state trying to address some of these concerns?
Well, there's 8,000 bills that are typically filed, 7,500 that are filed a year. And certainly, I think, when it comes to the Municipal Empowerment Act, I, I think that is another bill that's providing tools in the toolbox for cities and towns to, to look towards revenues, et cetera. This particular issue, though, again, four bills that have been filed out of, you know, 351 cities and towns, or four home rules, Chris, is not a tremendous amount. There has been conversations and discussions about it, but it just hasn't really had the momentum. And I guess that's, I'm just trying to be honest, that's just where we're at. It just hasn't really had the momentum. It doesn't mean that there isn't a lot of sort of admirable reasons to do it, and to, you know, sort of include more people in the process, and, and some feel that by having this tool available, that, that would include more people. But I think the concerns were, were pretty good, were, were strong by legislators that I had spoken to about it. And for the four communities that, that had filed it, you know, again, out of, out of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, those bills are, are most likely headed to a study.
Thank you.
Other, other questions on this topic?
John, go ahead.
Could you classify the thinking of the legislature on this, as far as what the problems that they see with this? Is there some way you can characterize that?
Yeah. I spoke with MMA today, too, the Mass Municipal Association, and I think, you know, they've talked about hybrid or extending hybrid stuff for, you know, public meetings. Right now, it's till 2027, right? That extension that happened for municipalities. So there's been some, you know, there's obviously been that discussion, too, with, with, with representative town meeting, right? But open town meeting, I think, John, some of the issues that, that there was concerns about essentially was, you know, clarifying people were who they were, having the, you know, the necessary, in this situation, it's like having the necessary security, validity, confirmation of the same person voting, which I already mentioned. And then the cost of maintenance, logistics, and guidance for towns, and guidance for select boards. And those issues, I think, are still, are still sort of being worked on, whether for legislators who have towns that are interested in doing this, as well as the Mass Municipal Association. So those are some of the issues, John, that have, that have been concerned.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah, Chris?
My, my, John, maybe you were.
Too bad. When this came forward, didn't we review some of the legislation that was out there? And we made a decision to get behind one of them? I thought we sent a letter in support. So I assume, Jim, you have that letter, and that, you know, you were saying earlier.
Can you say that again? Chris, I'm sorry, you weren't speaking, your mic totally.
Sorry, yeah. So what I'm saying is, when this resolution came forward at town meeting, the board received a number of different legislations that were in motion, Wayland being one of them. The board, this board got behind one of those motion, of those legislations, and then we submitted a letter in support of that. So I assume you've received that, because you mentioned earlier in your speech that you were, you know, looking for direction from the select board. I would assume that, that would be the direction that this.
Yeah, well, the direction, absolutely. And that was a year ago. And at that time, if we were on the, the select board meeting, I, I had said that if this is a home rule, if this is something that you would, you would like to do, you would pass a home rule within the town, not just a resolution. And I, I, I think as time moved forward, I think what the, the chair had said as well is that there wasn't enough clarity to find out if this was worth moving forward with this legislative session. And by reporting back to you what I am hearing, and where these four towns that have filed home rules have gone, that's, that's probably the answer that the chair and members were looking for, if that's, if that answers.
Yeah, Jim's answering the question that, that we posed. The question is, should we be optimistic about the, the chances of a timely move forward with the home rule, were we to do one right now? It sounds like you've said the ones that have gone before have really stalled out and studied for the reasons that you mentioned. So I think that answers the question that we were.
Well, on the logistics part, yeah. I mean, there's still, there's still a lot that those particular communities wouldn't actually sure what the select board, how they would move forward on logistics. And that's, there's no uniform.
Right. Right. Okay. So I, I think we have the answer that we were hoping for there. There was another topic that we were interested in. Jim and John, we had a, a group of residents come forward and, and sort of ask about moving forward with the idea of non-citizen permanent residents who met a bunch of other criteria being able to vote.
Sure.
So I think another question we asked you is, there is legislation, I think, that's, that's active in some form. We wanted kind of the same kind of read from you. Does that, does that have legs? Is that getting support?
Yeah, well, so doing our research, and talking to the Secretary of State's office as well, and colleagues, and, and the House and the Senate, as of September of 2025, the District of Columbia, certain municipalities in California, Maryland, and Vermont allowed non-citizens to vote in some or all local elections. But no state constitutions explicitly allowed non-citizens to vote in state or local elections. Every state requires voters to attest they are a U.S. citizen when they are registering to vote. So what does that mean? That's a, that's, we're, we're coming into a gray and confusing area. So speaking with the Secretary of State's office, their issue is that there's a question of constitutionality from the Secretary. Their issue is that there's a question of constitution constitutionality from the Secretary of State's office and the conflict with the current state law. So. They're worried about the actual constitutionality of this. What state law says, the terminology and the definitions. And they feel that, or the Secretary of State's office felt that the bill would lead to, or these bills, there's five of them filed. That they would lead to inconsistent application. And be contrary to state law. So that. Is a big concern that they have, that Secretary of State's office has on, you know, allowing. Permanent noncitizens voting in local elections, number one. But also that. It would authorize select boards to formulate regulations and guidelines. So it gets pretty murky. And if you actually, you know, if these five community, I mean, I could say five states. And communities within that state have done that. It still says that no state constitution explicitly allowed noncitizens to vote in state or local elections. No state constitution. But every state. Requires voters to attest they are U.S. citizens when they're registering to vote.
So Jim and John, is it your take that the five bills that were put forward are now effectively dead? Or are they stalled? Or is there any motion on those? Or is it, or is the?
They are moving, they are in or are moving most likely to study.
Okay, and moving to study means it's it's moving kind of off track.
So things can get pulled out of study, but they're to do more investigative sort of research into. But typically, Tom. I would say most of the time, it means that they're not moving at all this session.
Okay. So so our question of is there something? Is there some example that we see moving forward that's on a track to to actually get some attention? We we don't really see that here either, it sounds like.
Absolutely not.
Okay. Questions from the board about about this topic? Obviously, the reason this has come up is we want to get back to the petitioner. Who brought forward the citizen's petition request and give feedback, not necessarily tonight, but give feedback from us about what we think the prospects look like.
Well, we also have this potential committee, too, that we have to.
Right, right. We have to decide, we have to decide basically if this is the right time for us to put precious citizen energy into this. The reason, at least to me, this is important, is that if there's not really a legislative path forward on it. It just raises the question about whether that's the best use of citizen talent. Okay. Any other questions on this? Guys, I know that we came, we're running a little bit late. Chris and I think, did you have a few other questions you wanted to ask if we could get another minute with them?
I think, Chris, did, Chris, you had something on cameras and speed enforcement?
Oh, only only if we had extra time and if if Chris's questions are answered.
All right, yeah, no problem.
Do you have anything?
Jim and John, thank you for being with us today. I think you alluded to you're still working through the municipal empowerment act, which includes some things related to remote meetings and. Other items that may be beneficial to municipalities. Double polls, we just had eight poll, five poll petitions tonight. Could you give us an update on where the legislature stands related to that?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we've had a number of different. Sort of sessions that we've, in my history, that I've been in, that we've moved big like this. We've moved different versions of municipal empowerment act. There is, you know, a lot of support behind it, giving communities the opportunity to assess themselves and work tools in the toolbox. At least on the Senate, the Senate and the House, you know, traditionally have been able to. Come to an agreement on on a package such as that. But I do feel that going into this legislative session, there's going to be a lot of uncertainty on the federal level as well. So we're 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 coming into the next FY27 budget session. And we'll get a better idea with House One and House Two, kind of like where we stand on on things. But I do believe that the hearing was just on 11/7. For the municipal empowerment act. And I would anticipate that we would most likely take that up probably after January. Senator and.
No, I I would agree, right? I think it is something that that I think a lot of legislators are hearing a lot from cities and towns who. Are feeling the same cost drivers in their budgets that we're feeling right now at the state. So I think things are very fluid in the sense that. There is a lot of uncertainty about the fiscal year that we're in, fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. We're we're at the point in the year right now where. We we actually have our eyes on three different fiscal years. So we're closing the books on '25, we're closely monitoring revenue collections for fiscal year '26. We are about at benchmark at fiscal year '26. And we're and and to be blunt, we're really looking with trepidation at fiscal year '27. One thing that is interesting in in the state coffers right now is. Nonwithheld income tax is really is outperforming. The income tax. So it's it's capital gains and the the surtax is performing well over our benchmark, and that's really holding the state up. And and that is really a function of the fact that, you know, the the stock market is up, I think, more than 60% over the past three years, 15% this year. So a lot of people who are doing very well are are exercising capital gains and and that is making its way into state coffers. What keeps me up at night is if if the economy turns and if there is a contraction or correction in the market. You know, things like the millionaire's tax and things like capital gains, which are propping up. The state revenues right now could fall off really precipitously. So that is something that we're we're monitoring very closely. As we move towards 2026, the consensus revenue hearing will be held in December. The consensus revenue number will be agreed upon between the House, Senate and the administration in January. And then the governor will file House One, which will really kind of kick off our budget deliberations for fiscal year '27. And I just want to note one one thing. So the the governor filed a budget last year for the fiscal year we are currently in, fiscal year '26. And the consensus revenue number that was agreed upon in January was actually a billion dollars over. A billion dollars more than the budget that got sent back to the governor's desk. And and that just kind of speaks to how fluid the process is. And how it can be impacted by tax collections and frankly, where the economy is as as we move. Closer toward putting that final fiscal fiscal year '27 budget together. So those are all things that we kind of have our eyes on right now. And all those are really gonna, we understand, have a big impact on your jobs as you put together your budget for the next year.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Not not the news we want to hear necessarily, but that's we, it's better that we hear it. Chris, did you have one more question for these folks?
Just have one more, it's more of a comment and a thank you. I know we've been working closely with your offices related to our national grid questions related to reliability and capacity. We have an issue where we have a reliability issue in terms of residential, as well as our commercial users. And we brought that to the forefront of national grid's attention. And then we want to attract business to Westford. We also want to make sure that we can, you know, provide electricity for those who want to convert to all electric, especially these new residential complexes that are coming into town. So I just want to thank you both for your advocacy, you meeting with us, you connecting us to the proper channels at the state level. I know the board appreciates that as well.
Yeah, well, thank you. Still more work to do, right? A long way to go on that, but I think we have the, I think we have a good coalition and the proper momentum as well, though.
Okay, well, guys, I know that we kept you a little bit longer than the age 15 that we planned. So thank you for being generous with your time, and we appreciate the updates.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night. Stay safe, hope your family feels better, Jim.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, Will, do you want to? Come on back?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we'll go with Will and then we'll get your your question.
So I apologize for that error, but we did correct it. And we did put in the differential differential.
So it's a $550 swing, actually a little bit more than that.
$590?
Yeah, so I'm just doing the between the, if it's $13,110 or $12,420, that's 700 bucks roughly. Swing from 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 a single tax rate to the maximum swing. Okay. So that that was a good question that was asked, so that that's the the range here. So we're we're rejoining the deliberation that we're having about selecting whether we're going to go with a single tax rate or a split tax rate. And I think a new question has come up. I'll go back to the board and back to the public, but I think a new question's come up online. I would like to take a question.
Sure, so Heather Fitzpatrick writes, a couple of years ago, we had a big shift from commercial to residential. I don't know if that's valuation or something else she's referring to. If we had a split rate, would it prevent these types of shifts? If it was split, the values could decrease, but an increased rate would at least keep business taxes the same instead of going down.
So what, I'm so I'm not following the que, so what's the question?
I don't see a question mark in these comments, so I don't know if it's just a comment.
I think it's. Well, I think, would would it change the shift if? I mean, it's all, the ratio is going to stay the same. If we have a residential, what's changing the residential commercial split is is the number of houses and commercial properties and their valuation. And so that shift is is primarily driven by the fact that we're increasing new houses faster and we're increasing commercial properties.
Correct.
So that, so I don't think it would, I don't think a differential would change the shifting of the tide, that's more of a market effect. So I think the question, I guess the remaining part of the question is. I'm not sure if I understand it correctly, but it sounded like. It it sounded like there was a, there was a feeling that the tax rate was going down for businesses. I think relative to their valuation, it's it's basically staying at the same ratio to the overall number. So I'm not. I'm not totally sure. So. Okay.
Heather has her hand raised.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Let me try to unmute you, hold on, Heather. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, hi, Heather.
Oh, great, hi. So a couple of years ago, there was a big shift where I I remember a lot of people were thinking their taxes went way up more than two and a half percent. And I think it was partially driven by valuation. And I know there's particular properties that had a very large decrease in their value, which shifted the burden to the residential, a higher burden. So I guess my question is, if it was split. You know, if the if the businesses' valuations went down, would that at least keep the, you know, the 10% of business, 10%? And I'm making up a 10% as opposed to shifting it over to the residential and then becoming 9%?
I see what you're saying, you're basically saying, yeah, I I think I understand your question. The question is, could you, over a single year or a couple of years, maintain the percent that that the CIP group is paying? By gradually stepping into a split rate? If you if you if you move to a split rate, you can keep that percent paid the same, okay. So I think mathematically, you're correct, Heather, you you could do that. So I think the I think the board understands if we prioritize keeping the split the same, you might choose to do that. It'd be possible to do that by moving to a split rate, at least for a couple of years.
Right, I've been in a previous, a previous community worked in. They they used the share percentage, so they would say, we want to keep it 60/40 or 85/15 or whatever it was. No matter what the numbers were, they kept that share percentage the same. And so that was, that's that's in essence, I think, what what you're saying.
Right, it it would be possible to do that.
Right.
Okay, so fair, fair point, I think we understand. Other questions? Other questions for the board? Any other questions from the public? I guess where I'm, so I was, I was on the this this committee that studied closely whether it made sense to go to a split rate or not. I think my position is the same as it was after we completed that study, which is. Basically, in order to make a meaningful difference to the resident, you need to make a really disproportionate change to the businesses. I think businesses are also community members that we want to thrive in Westford. And I guess the, I found the the issue of being competitive with our neighbors when people are doing site selection about where they want to be to be compelling. So I would, I'm in favor of maintaining the single.
So to that end, I was just looking online. So it looks like Acton is not split, Chelmsford is split, but it's 13.9 residential, 16.93 commercial. So not as great of a split that we would maybe be considering here. Littleton, though, is 14 residential, 21.9. This is obviously for last year. So they're a little bit closer to, you know, whatever we would decide, 12.42 versus 19.966 or whatever. So to your point, do we have any data that would say, hey, if we did shift it meaningfully, would we lose businesses?
Yeah, at least at the time, we didn't have data that suggest, we didn't have, there was no like A B test that conducted that experiment. It was sort of the the opinion of the group after conducting the survey.
What we know now is that we do have a need to bring more businesses into Westford. We have vacancies, right? I mean, so certainly won't help that cause if we jack the tax rate up.
Right, I believe that's true.
Yeah, I agree with Chris, we're trying to get businesses to come to town.
We'll, we'll, we'll come to you, Dennis, in just a second. I just want to make sure we've heard from anybody. Any other comments from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that's my concern, too. Kind of wish that we had Krista Paul here in the sense that we'd be looking a year down the road and. It strikes me that we have one of two options, the first of which, which is take the pot of money that we have now and play with the numbers. And put more of a strain on our commercial properties. Or, you know, should we really be focusing on getting more businesses to come to town to essentially grow the pot, right? And and I think if we focus on the latter, which, you know, Jim Morris has been here many times. We have a game plan for that. I think we're we're better served by focusing, trying to grow the pot as opposed to. Make shifts and try to prioritize one. Community member over another.
Chris, and I want to go to these folks, and if you're coming back to the mic for a second time, if you could be making a new comment.
Oh, yeah, new comments.
Go ahead, Chris.
Well, question for you. So if we were to increase the commercial rate, so for a business that's a part of Cornerstone Marketplace. How does the tax hit them? So I assume the tax rate is going to hit the person who owns Cornerstone.
Correct.
And then that person's going to pass it on to all these small businesses that house tenants. And those tenants are either going to pass that cost on to.
The consumer.
Consumers being Westford residents for the most part and or.
I think that's, that's the ripple effect with something like that.
Okay, thank you, just want to verify. Okay, Dennis.
Dennis Galvin, Indy Concord Road, just a comment and then a follow up question based on the new data. First of all, when you're starting to anticipate the idea of delving into commercial revenue, there's three things that are working against you. And we've watched this over the last nine years, easily. Number one's the sales tax. Most of people are going to go to Hampshire, they're not going to spend their time doing retail here. Second thing is, there's an issue with the energy. That's becoming more and more compounded. We're going straight to to electric, and that is a major issue for a lot of people who want to invest here. The third thing is, and you just heard a very good example. Massachusetts is having fiscal instability, has a reputation for that over the years. So most people who look around and look for business, one of the last places they're not going to come is here, because it's too financially unstable. They're making all their money off the capital gains tax. I mean, that's not going to encourage businesses, okay? So that's the comment I make. The question I have is this. Number one, what is the single tax, the average single tax rate per thousand right now on residential property today?
In all of Massachusetts?
No, right in this town here.
So it's $13.47.
$13.47.
Fiscal 2025.
Okay, now, if we go to a split tax rate. In the next session, the next next go around, how much does, what is that, what's the effect on that $13.40, go up or go down?
If we go with a single rate this year?
Just go split rate first.
Well, use use a million, million dollars if you just, it would be, if we went 10%. You can go increments of up to 150, you can go 50, 50 different increments. So I've done 10% would be $12,970 with a 10% increase.
So how is that much for a thousand? How much would that equate to a thousand, per thousand valuation of the home?
$12.97.
And how about the?
For 10, for a 10% increase.
And how about the single tax rate? How does that affect it?
No, that that is a single of the residential. You're talking about the difference between the $12.97 and the $14.47.
Well, I'm just trying to get an idea relatively. If our, if the average single tax rate today is $13.47. If the average single tax rate today is $13.47, how does this impact that? Either way, single rate or with split rate, does it go up? Does it go down? How does it factor out?
Dennis, if I may, so there's a two-step process here. So we're going from $13.43, whatever, to what Will's suggesting, which is $13.11. That's because the valuations have gone up.
Okay.
And so basically, the total amount of money we're collecting is going up a little, but the valuations are going up faster. So the assessment for a thousand is actually going to go down in this process.
Okay. All right. That's good to know.
So... But because your assessment's going to go up, I think when you combine the two numbers in an earlier slide, they said the average residential payer is going to pay 4% more.
About 4%.
4% more.
So the valuation's going up, the assessment's going down, the net is 4%.
I guess. All right.
Right. So some of the... Just the basics with value. When value goes up, tax rate comes down. Doesn't mean your tax bill comes down, but the tax rate will come down. So when you look at a community, you don't want to just say they have a low tax rate, because Nantucket has a really low tax rate. But guess what? Their average is over $2 million. But their tax rate is in the $8 or $6 or something like that. So you always have to look at two things. What's the value? And what's the tax rate? You can't just look at tax rates.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Dennis. Welcome.
Hi. Dale Knowles, Eight Minute Man Lane. I'd like to know what you're thinking of in terms of all these... You're saying businesses coming into Westford. Where are they going to go? And what kind of businesses? I mean, I know of like one little strip mall that needs a couple of, you know, businesses in there, but I feel like Westford is very well populated between residents and commercial and businesses.
So most of the... So I'll answer your question. Just by protocol, a comment doesn't necessarily drive to a discussion, because it may not be on what's on the agenda and we have to stick to the agenda. But I'll answer your question. So... Because the Economic Development Committee looks at this closely. So most of the land in town that is zoned commercial, you're right, most of that land is already occupied with something. But the utilization rate is not very high in Westford. So we have a lot of space that's built that's empty. And so a lot of what we're doing when we're trying to boost business activity is either attract new people to take empty space or to make it attractive to redevelopment something like a Class A office space that's no longer very desirable into something that's more desirable. So there is a lot of opportunity to increase the commercial activity in Westford without changing what the commercial district overlay is, if that makes sense. So the land that's designated for commercial is going to stay the same unless the town changes it. But what we can do is make better use of the land, and a lot of it's empty now.
But giving them a single tax rate, the same one that we're paying, how does that help Westford?
It makes it more attractive... One of the... The argument is, one of the many things that businesses use when they're making a relocation choice is what their tax rate will be when they move to that area. And so if you have a more attractive tax rate, relative to someone, all else being the same, if you're asking a business, "Do I want to choose a high tax rate or a low tax rate?", they're going to choose a lower tax rate.
Do you think the difference of a couple of percent is going to make that big of a difference to them?
It does, yes. We've had data from our economic partners that state that.
And we know that places next to us, like Chelmsford, have a split tax rate, so their commercial taxes are substantially higher.
It's a little bit hard to know, but we do believe it's a factor.
And you think that's more important than what a family pays over a year if they can save $700? Is that really going to... Is Westford going to be better off with one or two new businesses because we have a lower tax rate?
You know, I think we care about... We care about building a healthy community in lots of areas, so I guess I don't... I wouldn't... I certainly wouldn't say I care more about our business partners in town than I do about the residents, but I think both are interesting.
I'm not implying you don't care about them, but it seems like... I'm getting a feeling like the consensus is, we want to bring in new business, so we're going to go with a single tax rate. And I just think you ought to think a little more about the people.
Yeah, I think... So just a quick answer, and then we should move on to any other questions that people have. But Westford has done this in basically the same way for a long time. We've done the same equation of looking at how the valuations are changing and how the assessment rate should change. So in my mind, we're not saying we're making a change to raise it by 700. We're actually doing the proposal on the tables, we'd be doing exactly the same method instead of rebalancing in favor of the businesses in a way from residents. So I understand your question. Nobody wants to pay $700 more on their tax bill, but if they have a million-dollar house. But, you know, I think what primarily we're deciding is, do we continue on the same path we've been on, or do we now begin to make a change? And that's what we're deciding.
I hope you go for the change.
Great. Welcome, Scott.
Scott McKay, Seven Crown Road. So I'll give you the benefit of my gray here. Forty years ago, I served on the first tax classification committee in multiple years after that. And I think the last committee I've served on, Tom, was with you. And every year, it was found that a shifted tax rate was not going to benefit the residences as much as it's going to hurt the businesses. And that's always been the methodology used. And I think your assessor will tell us, if the property is assessed fairly, the tax rate can be single rate. If the assessment is skewed in any way, which I don't believe it is in Westford, then the single rate is the way to go. And like I said, I've done this for 40 years, because I have residential property and commercial property. So I'm either paying on one side or I'm paying on the other. So I think you guys are on the right path of keeping a single rate and try to bolster the tax base through commercial development.
Thanks, Scott. Okay. Okay. So we'll take Heather's comment, but is the board ready to move forward with the decision? Okay. So Heather, this is going to be the last comment. We're going to take it on the side before we move on.
Okay. Thank you for taking my comment. The luxury of paying the bills for commercial...
Heather, I'm sorry. So if you're in line, please, we'll also recognize you.
I can be very quick, because I think some of it's been said. Cynthia King, 82 Debo.
Heather, apologies. Do you mind if we just take the person at the mic first real quick?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry, Heather.
Yeah, no problem.
I just wanted to check, right now, businesses are paying the same percentage as homes?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Businesses pay the same per thousand.
Same percentage?
No.
No.
Tax rate is the same, not percentage.
Yeah.
But if you have $1,000 of value in a commercial property or $1,000 of value in a residence, you're going to pay the same rate.
Right. Right. That's what I understood. I'm in the same boat as this gentleman. I own a business... Small business here in town, one of the business condos, and then live here. So I know I'm going to pay one way or the other. But I just wanted to make the comment on, you had said about the empty property that we have, commercial property on 110. And in Littleton, they're going to build that big development where IBM is. And there's going to be businesses going in there. It's going to attract a lot. And I think Westford needs to try to attack some of that business down here. We may lose things where they go up to Littleton. So I think keeping the same rate would at least help, you know, for that. And I think we should look at developing the property that we have empty, so that we could put more businesses in there, and then you get more tax revenue from that.
Okay. Thank you. Heather?
I just wanted to make the comment that I pay the bills for my neighborhood's association and the common land. The... I feel like that... I know this is kind of separate, but that assessment doesn't seem to go up. So by that kind of remaining flat or just raising a little bit... And I do think Will looked at it when he first came on board with Westford. If it's not keeping pace with the 2.5%, eventually more of that 2.5% shifts to the residential. And then the other thing I wanted to say is paying property tax bills for a commercial enterprise for a long time, at least in the last decade, the bill's been relatively flat compared to my home, which is, you know, 40% higher. So I just want to make those comments, so...
Okay.
More info.
Thank you, Heather. I guess there was a question about how does common community land change in its valuation? So maybe you could comment on that.
I got to think, since I've been here since the May of 2021, we have changed... I have changed the land values just about every year, so they should be changing. And they should have seen an increase in those, in that common land.
Okay.
If they haven't...
So maybe changing at a different rate, but you're doing the assessment every year on the same schedule.
Right. Anything that's taxable land or land with improvements should have gone up. There's very little that's gone down.
Okay. Thank you. Healthy discussion. I'll entertain a motion for the classification of real and personal property. And do you want to go to the last? I think the motion needs to be in a specific form. Was it a suggestive motion on the last slide?
On the last slide, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion if you... Anyone would like to make one? Okay.
I think we can make a motion to keep the single tax rate for Westford.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, board members.
Yeah, thanks for being a good sport about fixing the numbers.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
There's nothing more embarrassing than having a bad number in a slide.
Yeah. That's not good.
I'm glad that someone caught it, and I'm glad you faced it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have a special town meeting recap and review with our fabulous town moderator, Angela.
Here I am fabulously. So thank you very much for putting this on your agenda tonight. I'm sorry I wasn't here at your last meeting, where you did have a discussion of this. And one of my suggestions is that we don't do it that quickly ever again, because I was really still decompressing from the night before. Plus, there's just a lot of information that's not available until a day or two later, numbers and how things went. It just takes a little bit of time to put all that together, and I prefer to have all that in hand and in my brain and have my brain working right before coming to talk to you about it. So hopefully, next time, we can have a few days in between the meeting itself and your discussion of it.
Makes sense.
So...
Angela, could you pull your microphone a little closer? Thank you.
So...
And George, just so you know, this microphone is not actually amplifying any sound. It's picking up for the people on Westford CA.
But I'll try to talk louder, George. I'll try...
Or George, if you'd like to move closer to the front.
I'm usually very demure, but I'll try to speak loud. So looking back on it, I think the meeting went very well. We started at 7:02 and adjourned at 10:50. And the town manager's assessment of how many people were going to be there is, once again, pretty much right on the money. It's great. She predicted 6:97. We actually had 718 people check in. All of our... All of the things we've implemented, parking, free transportation, free childcare, were all used. Parking was just about adequate, mostly because we were also allowed to use the JV field. There were a few cars on the JV field. And I think the takeaway from that is that had we had the soccer game going on, we would have had a parking problem. So that's just something to keep in our heads for next year, to make sure that the school calendar is cleared for a town meeting event. In terms of the process at the meeting, there were a few things that came up that we can make better next year. The TV screens were kind of low. For some reason, they weren't on the same extensions we had them on last year. People couldn't see them in the back, didn't know that till afterwards. Next year, we'll make sure we get them... At the annual town meeting, we'll make sure we get them up higher again. There was a little bit of a slowdown with the clicker count, and I think that Nathan is working on that, our new IT director with Meridia, to figure out what's going on with that and see if we can't speed that up. It's still much better than having to count anything, but now we're spoiled, and I want it to be really fast, much faster. So we'll work on that. It was great that we finalized our arrangements with the sound technician, with that... Basically, that Mark Miller came back for the day, and hopefully, we won't have to wait until the last minute to do that for the next meeting. We'll have that arranged in advance, because that was a little bit of anxiety at the end there, when we didn't know what was going to happen. But it all worked out. It was all fine.
We've already made a meeting on that, so we'll be prepared for this, right?
Good. Great. The last thing that I had about the meeting itself was, because of the particular issue, we had a lot of kids there, which is great. Not trying to discourage the kids from attending, but I wasn't quite prepared for it. And when they started speaking out, when I asked for a yea or nay vote, I said, "Oh, okay. I don't think I can do it that way anymore." And it really just is a matter of me putting a little more information out about how we welcome kids at the meeting, but they have to be with their parents, and they have to abide by the rules, and they can't speak, and they can't make noise, and all of that stuff. So that's... There were also a bunch of high school kids in the back, who I heard later were talking and keeping the people in the back from hearing what was going on. So had I known that during the meeting, I would have asked somebody to go back there and quiet them down or clear them out, one or the other. But we'll get all that straightened out for the next meeting. In terms of the length of the meeting, which I know you guys spent a lot of time on at your last meeting, I thought about it a lot after that. And honestly, the real reason the meeting was a little longer than we expected was that people had a lot of questions. And you know what? There's nothing we can do about that, including discourage them from asking in any way. They're really entitled to ask as many questions as they want to. I mean, it's up to me to sort out things that have been asked before or that are irrelevant, but if people have relevant questions, they have to be allowed to and encouraged to ask them. So I don't really think there's much we could have done to make that meeting any shorter, basically just thinking about the questions that people had. So that's my takeaway from the meeting. I do like Chris's idea of having somebody up there to help with amendments. I think you brought that up last time. That's a great idea. I'm going to work on that for annual town meeting if the town can assist with the techno- technology aspect of it. It would be really helpful if somebody's making an amendment to send them to someone who can help them get it down in writing, have it delivered immediately to the person who's putting up the slides and to the clerk. And then we can get to it right away. That will save some time, I think. I would like to have some, this is something that's come up before. A few years ago, Patty may remember, many years ago, I think, we had some schedule for how far in advance the motions and the information needed to be presented to the public or available to the public. And I think we ran a little short on time at this meeting. I don't think that stuff was really, my, my recollection is that even the planning board, the zoning article information was not available to the public until just a few days before the meeting. And the further in advance it's available, I mean, I think two weeks is ideal. One week certainly should be available to the public. Because the further in advance it's available, the more likely it is that whoever needs to answer questions will be able to do that in advance of the meeting and will waste less time, not waste, will have to spend less time at the meeting answering questions. So, so that's something I think we could work on for next year. And sort of in conjunction with that, my meeting with the staff and Kristen ahead of the town meeting to determine who's going to answer questions probably should also be done. Actually, that should be done a little closer to the meeting. Because we, we did it, I think, too far away from the meeting and then it wasn't clear who wanted to make presentations at the meeting. And perhaps some additional presentations would have answered questions that people had to get up and ask. So, um, yeah, I think, oh, finally, I'm also glad that you decided to clarify whatever policy there's, there is or is going to be on what can come up at special town meetings. That's, what you decide is not my concern as moderator. My concern is the fact that it's come up now a couple of times at meetings and we're spending time on it. So it's a procedural thing, a policy thing, that I think the select board can, can handle. And I'm glad to hear that you had those discussions. And that's about all I have, but happy to answer any questions.
I think the only, the only question, like every question we, we welcome for the people who show up at town meeting, and I may have been one of them in the past, that has not done a huge amount of preparation. I think those, like explainer lead-in presentations can be particularly helpful to kind of set the context. And I think, I mean, you already mentioned it, but I think next time, I would, I'd be more interested if there's something that's a little bit complicated with some moving pieces, to have a brief explanation at the beginning so that people don't have to raise their hand and say, wait, I don't even understand what this is.
Right. So, it's not really up to me to decide whether or not an article needs a presentation. I think that's something we can talk about at, at the pre-meeting that I have with, with the staff. But it's really, I think, up to Kristen and the staff as to whether or not they think an, an explanation is appropriate. I can, if I see that people are confused, you know, address somebody to answer their questions. But without knowing in advance that there's a presentation to be made, I would normally try to save time and just go right to the questions.
Yeah, Chris, a couple of thoughts.
So, one, I think a good maybe opportunity for us to decide if a motion needs a, an article needs a presentation is when the select board's going over that in the, you know, I think that's at least enough time in advance when we're setting that all up. We can have, oh, this looks a little complex. This is something that we think town staff and Kristen, you can help us decide who, blank the time, communicate to you, get your approval. I also think that would give us enough time to have something maybe in place for mock town meeting. So to your comment about people asking questions, I love the questions, but I also feel that we have this wonderful resource, which is Legal Women Voters Mock Town Meeting, which usually happens a week or two prior to the actual town meeting. And that is a phenomenal opportunity for people to get acquainted with the nuances of articles, ask as many questions as they would. It really is something that I, we should strive to push harder because it's a wonderful resource. And I think the more people can take advantage of it, the faster our town meetings will go and I think we'll get better engagement. So, you know, we're always working on getting more information out to our residents and this will be something I think we need to, to focus on as a, as a resource.
Yeah, I think that, I, Kristen, I think you did more to publicize that this year. It seemed like it was more publicized this year than before. But maybe a good thing to do is to have at your meetings, just saying, don't forget this Thursday, the 17th, is the League of Women Voters. If you have questions or if you want to know about the articles, have the planning board do it, have the cons come do it. When, when all three of the boards that, people, school committee that people watch do it, it hits a lot of different segments of the community.
Agreed. Yep. Good point. Other, other comments? John?
Well, I think one of the issues was, was the issue in our policy about timeliness, whether or not this really needed to be done now. And I think that's a judgment we need to place on when we create the warrant. Is it really necessary and why is it, why is this timeliness important? You know, and I thought that one of them, the question was asked, why aren't we even doing this because of the timeliness? And I think we need more, a little bit clearer on that.
Yeah, I think, John, I think what we think, at least we've talked about with Kristen, is, is for the, the next time more comes up. So for spring town meeting, we, we have that policy up in front of us. Well, I guess it doesn't make sense to do it for that. Next time we do it for special town meeting, we'll have the policy up in front of us and we'll ask, does this meet the criteria laid out here? And if there's a reason that it should move forward anyway, because it wasn't probably perfect when they created the criteria, then we say we're going to waive the policy for this reason. But we, we're explicit about it.
So we should address that before the town meeting?
We definitely, yeah. I, I think it was a very fair point and we should either have an exception to the policy for a good reason or use the policy, so.
Or better define it.
Or change the policy if you'd like to change it as well.
Well, you could define it, you know, what do we mean by timeliness? I mean, is it absolutely necessary because of outside, you know, like we did for the library? That was a classic example. If we delayed it, we weren't going to get to Monday at all.
Well, I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea to do when you're, again, whatever policy you do have, whether it's the existing policy or a new policy or no policy, if it's no policy, it doesn't matter. But if you have any policy, when you're reviewing the warrant and doing your approvals to say, this is the criteria it fits under in our policy.
Yeah.
That's a, that's a really good idea.
So that's planned. Yeah, other, other comments?
The only other thing I thought of Angela is it seemed like a bigger volume fraction of time than normal was spent on amendments. I'm not sure there's anything to do about that. I don't have a suggestion, but I guess except for streamlining the process, which you've already mentioned, any, any sense of why that, uh, because that seemed like, like a two X change, two big change?
Well, it really, there were, there was, um, now, now, now too much time has passed. I feel like there were, were there two or three amendments?
Seemed like many more than that.
No, there weren't. There were two motions to divide and then either two or three amendments. Those were the, those were the ancillary motions that happened. Is Dennis still here?
No.
No.
Because he would know exactly. But I, I'm pretty sure that there were, there were two, maybe three amendments and the two motions to divide. The, one of the motions to div- to divide led to us taking five votes instead of one. It was that second article or third article where we had five different, um, project, capital items. And the person who made a motion to divide it into five separate votes. That took a, a lot longer than it would have otherwise taken. And then the motions to divide took a little time too. And it's possible we could have not had those if, if the articles had been drafted a little differently. I think some of the articles were, things were combined that were confusing to the public in terms of why they were together. And that's how we ended up with the motions to divide.
Yeah. Okay. I, I mean, I think...
It really was not an unusual number of amendments.
You don't think so? Fair enough. George?
Thank you. George Murray, 14 Haywood Road. Just a few comments and bear with me because I hope, I hope this comes out the way I intended. First of all, the comments that were made about reviewing your policy with the articles in front of you before the, the meeting comes up, I think is an outstanding improvement that we could make. And I, I felt guilty standing up and saying my piece about the, the article, trying to dismiss the article that had the five major capital items all in one article, because I should have done my homework. And I did go to the Legal Women Voters session. But one of the experiences that I had is I got my single-page explanation of town meeting the day before town meeting in my mail. And I got to town meeting and I had to pick up 40 pages of handouts to try to get some further understanding of what was, was on the agenda and what we were going to be discussing. And it was, and of course, you know, you like to say hello to people that you know and so forth. And it just, I wasn't prepared. The overall, two things. With all of the, the dissension and so forth we've had in national politics over the last year or so, I think the most important positive attribute that we have in Westford, and I've, I've made this point before, is that we trust each other and the town is trying to work together. And I may say, John, I think that was a dumb idea you had, but where are we going? What do you want to do about it? You know? And, and so we've been able to work together. I think that's getting eroded or corroded or whatever you want to call it. I think there's far too much emphasis in town meeting and in tonight's discussion on things taking too long. I think for many of the articles that we voted on at the special town meeting, 80% of the people in the room had no idea what the hell was going on. Because it was so fast, people were being pushed to, you know, okay, sit down, we gotta, we gotta move on. Those five items that were on capital that we ended up all in one motion. I don't know how that came about. That should have been five separate articles. I mean, you had to go into town meeting, say, well, okay, we got a bunch of zoning things and, oh, by the way, we got $5 million in capital that we'd like you to take a look at tonight, but not too long because we've got to move along. And, you know, kudos to Dennis for, for pushing to, to break that apart so that you got at least a little bit of time to discuss it and to, to think about, is this the right time to do it? On, back to, to the policy. I know exactly when that issue came up, at least in my experience. 1972, there was an article to replace the roof on the Abbott School. And it came up at special town meeting, which was like, I don't know, three months after the annual town meeting. And the question I asked the selectman at the time was, you mean, nobody knew that roof was going bad until after the annual town meeting? And all of a sudden, we've got to do it at a special town meeting? And that leaves, that leaves our decision-making open to question and criticism and suspicion and, and not very healthy attributes. So, again, if we could get that nailed down. But I'm really concerned, and I know I've taken too much time here, but the real concern that I have is that we're not taking enough time at town meeting. People don't know what they're being asked to do. We're spending millions and millions of dollars with very limited knowledge. I mean, just to, to make another point, I sat here tonight and we spent 45 minutes on a subject that I came away knowing absolutely nothing more about than when I walked in the room. Because the slides were full, you know, we can get a few more Excel cells on that page. You couldn't see them. It's a very complicated subject. And we've been having that discussion for every year that I've been at town meeting as well. And you know what? We always come out the same place. Keep it, keep, keep one tax rate. Why don't we just say that as a policy and then challenge it if you want to? Somebody tell them why. But thank you for listening. May not always seem it, my heart's in the right place. And I, I want to make sure that we're doing what's going to make it better for the people in town to understand what's going on. Customer relations, if you will. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Ray.
Thanks, George.
Can I just, can I just speak to my friend George Murray's comment? So, I also agree that people need to be able to speak and ask questions and understand what's going on. I have to balance that against the overall efficiency of the meeting. And maybe I don't always make the right decision, but that's, that's my job is to try and keep us from taking so long that people don't want to participate. And at the same time, allow people enough time to understand, ask questions and participate. One thing I can do, I'll say it again, is try and get the information out to people earlier. And also try to make people more aware of the fact that the information is available to them online, especially since we keep having this comment about people not being able to see the screen, not knowing what's going on because they can't. We have to make it clear to the public that the information is available to them either online or here at town hall ahead of time. And it has to be far enough ahead of time so they can take advantage of it. So that's probably the most important thing we learned from this meeting, I'd say.
Fair point. Any other feedback or questions for Angela?
No, but are we going to actually talk about the special town meeting policy under this agenda item? Or are your thoughts that we tackle that at another time?
Well, what I was thinking is that next time it was in front of us, we would bring that up in parallel and at the time say, you know, how do we feel about these set of criteria against these things?
So you want to revamp the policy when we might next actually use the policy?
Yeah. That was my thought because if it was in front of me, I'd be like, oh, in this context, I understand. Yeah, this, this does make sense. We shouldn't do this. But I, I don't, I don't object to talking about now. Yeah?
Yeah. I, I guess my thoughts are, is that one of the biggest problems that we have with the policies is that it's unclear. Like, there's no mandatory language in it. And we even had our council who was there at town meetings say, well, you know, this, this isn't even binding on anyone, you know? So, I, I think just as a, as a group, we have to decide like, are these criteria mandatory? And if so, well, let's say it. And if they're only mandatory sometimes, well, what are the exceptions when we're going to deviate from that? And to do that, I think we need to delve into kind of the meat of the policy. And maybe that's not appropriate for right now, but I think we probably got to do it certainly before our next special town meeting.
Okay. So is, is it the consensus of the board that we should, we should agenda basically an edit like of the policy itself before, at least sometime in between now and special town meeting?
I, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, uh, why don't we, why don't we point it out for future agenda?
And just as a reminder, our annual town meeting is coming up on March 28th, the fourth Saturday, and March 17th at 9:00 AM. So, and you'll be, you'll be opening the warrant at your first meeting in December, which is not too far away. One from another. Never, never ends.
Okay. Anything else related to Angela's feedback?
Thank you for coming to talk to us.
Thank you so much for having me and for all your support from, from the board and the staff. Thank you.
Many more years of you at the helm.
Angela, 2026.
That's right.
The start of the campaign.
I could see it fabulous.
The start of the involuntary campaign. Okay. Next up is review and accept the fiscal '27 budget policy. This is, uh, if you're the second or third time to come in front of us, maybe we can get this up on the, on the screen.
Could you just bring that up when you have a second? So, at your tri-board meeting, we had asked for review of the fiscal '27 budget policy and there were some comments from other committee members and I believe Chris as well. And this was pertaining specifically to bullet point five where it read, strive to maintain current service levels. Mike just brought up on the screen what our suggested edits are. And we also wanted to address revenue and excess free cash rep and change that to available funds because there could be other funds other than free cash. So, wanted to get your guidance this evening and hopefully an approval as I will be presenting the budget for fiscal '27 at your next meeting in December.
Any comments related to this?
No.
I, I appreciate the edits. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Okay. So since this, this is the second time we've seen, or second or third time we've seen this, if, if there's no discussion from board and no comments from the public, uh, would you like a vote to accept the change?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the fiscal '27 budget policy as amended.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Next up is the 840 item to accept and sign the change in law to allow licensing conversions for the sale of wines and malt beverages for on promises, on premises consumption into a license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages for on premises consumption. So if you want to review the...
Sure. The next few articles are a little bit of our work after town meeting. So as you may recall, town meeting did vote to allow us to adopt chapter 138, section 12D of the general law to allow for conversions for restaurants. We currently have wine and malt beverage licenses to convert to an all alcohol license. We do need to file with the ABCC that our town meeting did approve that. You may or may not want to discuss this evening any fees associated with that. We had a brief conversation with Lori Shaw, our town clerk, when she was introducing this potential law to, to come before the town meeting, that we have one rate for malt beverages and wine for that license and one rate for all alcohol and what we would charge. And we were talking about, we would charge the difference if they wanted to increase. So, really the business this evening, we'd like to, you to accept and sign the change of law so we can get that filed with the state and then get consensus if you'd like us to come back with a fee schedule for that in the future.
I think directionally, it makes sense to, to have the fee represent the difference as Kristen described.
Yeah.
Do we want to have that come back or do we want to have that? Is that sufficient guidance?
Yeah.
Are we, are we comfortable making that pause?
Makes sense.
Any other comments on the, on the change in law itself? Or do you feel, do you feel comfortable voting for that, voting that in?
No.
Okay. So I'll accept the motion to accept and sign change in law to allow licensing conversions for sale of wines and malt beverages for on premises consumption into a license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages for on premises consumption with the applicable fee representing the difference in the current all alcohol beverage license from the wine and malt beverage license.
Tell them.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Super?
Great.
Old, new business?
So the next item is to execute the deed for D-Donato Drive.
Oh. Thank you.
We do have...
That's the nine o'clock item.
Nine o'clock item. Request to execute the deed for D-Donato Drive. Again, this was an item on the special town meeting that was approved. We do have documents before you this evening to, to file that at the registry. I do have Melissa Robbins online if there's any questions that come up as well.
Any questions related to the execution of the deed for D-Donato Drive? Okay. Any questions from the public?
Say hi to Melissa.
They're absolutely happy to.
Okay. There be no questions. I'll accept a motion to execute the deed for D-Donato Drive.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just have you sign that document once, when the meeting...
Okay, yeah. Please, please, please don't jet out of here when we're done. We've got a couple of things to sign.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank Melissa, Melissa. Next up is the 910. I interview an act to submit the general court, to the general court, the citizen's petition on all alcohol license for Main Street Convenience. So this was, this was voted on special town meeting. If there's any questions? This is a procedural item for us. Okay. Any questions from the public?
And just to remind the members of the public, if the legislature signs this, then the applicant must come forward back to the select board to apply for that actual license. So it's not the automatic.
Okay. You're right. All the, all the typical reviews are still in the car. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to submit to the general court the citizen's petition, citizen's petition for an all alcohol license for Main Street Convenience.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That was a very strong motion.
Ooh.
It's nine o'clock.
Good mental energy, okay. Okay, now we are at the old, new business.
All right. So the first item is a request from the... So the first item is a request from the cultural council to add a high school student seat for the one-year term to expire on June 30th, 2026. Is there anyone in the audience or online from the cultural council? Because I believe that they wanted to make an adjustment to this request. I'm not seeing anyone. I can try to speak to it, but if you.
It seems like if it's, well, and I think there were some questions that we had about the change and whether you could, you could make the change as requested.
Right. So.
So do we want to, do we want to push this till next time or?
Probably. So I did anticipate the person to be gone to this.
Okay.
So we just meet next, next Tuesday, so we'll move it to next Tuesday.
We'll move it to next Tuesday. So just for the board, I think, I think the request was to change it to an age range instead of a high school student. And we had some questions about whether you can specify a seat based on a specific, specific characteristic. Just want to make sure we're staying on the right side of the law.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe when that comes back, we can, we can hear and get opinion from council. So we've got something we can vote on. Okay. Next up is the request from the zoning board appeals to appoint Andrew Spanos to an alternate seat for the term to expire June 30th, 2027. Scott McKay's here on behalf of that committee.
Did you want to make your recommendation in person?
I can.
Do you want that?
Yeah, that'd be great. That's at least what we typically do, so.
Scott McKay, chair of the ZBA. The board came to unanimous decision to recommend Andrew Spanos for an alternate seat. Usually this board is very stable, but you know, in the last few years, we've lost a couple of members due to death. So trying to turn things around and get some young blood in there instead of the old gray head guys. So that would be our recommendation.
Good. Thanks, Scott. So Kristen, we had the comment earlier about kind of what the open seat structure was. So could you still clarify?
Sure. So in our database, we were showing five regular ZBA members and two alternate members. It was brought to our attention that there was a town meeting in 2005 that changed the number of alternates from two to three, and that was codified in our zoning bylaw. Unfortunately, our online database did not reflect that, and I was unaware of that until yesterday. We confirmed with the town clerk that we indeed do have three alternate seats on the zoning board of appeals. Right now, they have one member. This is to request another member for Andrew Spanos, so then there will be one open seat if the board does select to fill that third alternate seat.
Okay. So I think normal.
And the zoning board of appeals did, also did not know at that time, is my understanding. They believed that they only had one seat at that point in time.
Right. So normally we would act on recommendations. So I guess this is the discussion, but we, it seems like we can act on what's put in front of us tonight or discuss and consider acting what's in front of us tonight. And then I guess in the future meeting, the zoning board of appeals would come forward and make a recommend, a further recommendation.
You could ask the zoning board of appeals to go back and review their volunteer activity forums. You could ask to put this out there again for more volunteers, knowing now that there is one additional seat. So that the, the, the select board is the appointing authority, so you may make the decision.
Okay. And it seems like we need, we need to move to be in compliance with town meeting.
You don't necessarily need to be in compliance. It's more so if a zoning board of appeals member needs to recuse themselves, that alternate member moves up to that. So right now, we only have one member.
I just meant the three versus two. If town meeting voted to have three.
Right. They don't always need to be full, but they are available.
Okay. So we're not, we're not out of compliance?
We're not out of compliance.
That's not, that's not the right choice.
We're not out of compliance.
But we should make sure.
We have three available seats.
Right. So if there's a reason to create the third, we should, we should respect that. Okay. John?
Well, you know, they had two out of the four candidates show up at the meeting and selected one. And I think now that we've discovered there's a third vacancy, I think it'd be appropriate to appoint the other candidate to that third position. And, and we call it an alternate, but in state law, it calls it associate. For some reason or another, it calls it associate. And it's up to the chair of, of the board to, you know, to assign associate if they're, if they're short of primary member. But anyway, I think it'd be appropriate to go ahead and approve a second nominee.
So we certainly have that authority. So that, that is sort of the question.
We have the chairman of the.
Yeah, I would certainly want to ask the chair's opinion before we move to do something. I guess the question.
I think it would be appropriate to do that.
My allegation is that obviously we've developed a, a plan for appointing folks. And would this be consistent with that, right? Because my understanding is that generally we've taken the recommendation of whatever the, the group seeking the appointment does, right?
That, that has certainly been our practice.
Yeah.
So I think the plan, so they, they have followed the current process, right? So I think the difference here is they were operating with misinformation, unfortunately.
Exactly. Yeah. So I guess that's my point, which is that if the ZBA knew that there was two vacancies, you know, what, what would they have done? And I don't.
Actually, why don't we, why don't we ask the chair? So what's on the table is, do you feel you've got, I guess, sufficient input or sufficient guidance from the committee to go ahead and recommend two positions tonight since there are two open positions? Or do you feel like the way things stand with your committee, you're only in a position to make a recommendation for one?
At this time, without discussing it with the rest of the board, I would only take the one recommendation that we made to you. I would have to go back to my board and say, this is what's transpired. What do you think? Because I'm only one member, even though I'm the chair.
Yeah, I guess my, so I understand your point, John. I guess my feeling is we have a fairly long practice of, of respecting and following specific guidance from the committee. And although I understand the situation sort of creates an unknown open seat, if I had to choose between having them come back and make a recommendation according to the standard process rather than us assert our will over the committee, I guess I would pick the first instead of the second.
Well, I guess I was just thinking about what's going to change. In other words, had two qualified candidates, two qualified candidates, you know, appeared before the committee, the board of appeals for that slot. Now we've got two slots. I think that process has been, is taking place, and I don't know what, what would change going forward.
I think you're just asking for the formal recommendation from the ZBA to, you know, to align with our process that we've set.
I, I hear what you say, John. I guess I could be convinced. I just, it feels like they should vote on their own recommendation.
Okay.
Instead of us asserting it.
I mean, Mr. Chair, is it, would it be your preference to bring this back to your board to have a discussion?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I've been on the board 19 years now, and we've only had two alternates. And there has never been once in my 19 years that we've been short a member and we couldn't have a meeting.
Well, so I feel like if town meeting, so, okay, so there's, I guess there's a question of whether we leave it, choose to leave it unfilled. I guess I would feel a little bit differently if it was a mistake that we didn't understand that town meeting had given us this guidance. We tend to defer to town meetings guidance. So at some point, there was a reason. Now we could decide to modify it again and drop the number and go back to town meeting and make that change. But I guess my suggestion to you is to take it back to your committee. And my, my sense is that we tend to, just like we tend to favor the recommendations of the committees making the recommendations, we would tend to, to honor what town meeting specifies.
Well, it's in our zoning bylaw. So we allow for three alternate members in our zoning bylaw. It wasn't a resolution or anything.
Okay, it's in the bylaw.
It's in the bylaw.
Well, I guess it's one in the agenda, maybe we can't vote on it. There's one in the agenda.
Was it in the bylaw as you, as a result of town meeting?
Yes.
Increasing it to one?
Increasing it by one, two.
So do we know who made that motion to bring it into the town meeting?
Yes, I actually had the town clerk pull the select board meeting minutes, and there was a, a ZBA member who asked for that change. Let me see if I can pull that up right now.
It was in 2005.
In 2004 or 2005, because they were having issues with a quorum. So Sam Frank, chairman of the zoning board of appeals.
Going back 100 years.
Stated an additional member was needed for quorums and for future board member resignations. And that was at the April 19th, 2005 select board meeting.
I think my suggestion is that we move forward on what we have tonight and we ask the, the ZBA to absorb this new information, new to them and new to all of this information. So he has a time, so Scott and his committee have time to understand the history, understand where that came from, and then react to it. Yep, Nicole?
So Noel.
First of all, thank you. Back to you.
So if we have a board that has a position available, an alternate, an alternate or associate position, and we have a resident wanting to volunteer for that position, do we allow the board to say, no, we don't want to fill that? Or is that something, I mean, we don't want to really stop volunteers from volunteering?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how that's come up. It wouldn't be practice to say, whether or not the current membership agrees, if what's in the bylaw is, is that there are three.
Right.
At least it was the decision of the body at the time that change was made that we needed three. So I guess if I had to choose between, or I'm not choosing any, but if I had to interpret how I felt about, what do I feel about what's in the zoning bylaw versus what's the opinion of the current board? I think I would have to take the bylaw as, as the, as the higher level document, if that makes sense.
So we would say, would we say to the board that they would have to consider interviewing for that person if they wanted to volunteer for that position?
I think with, we would say if the bylaw specifies that, at least for reasons present at the time, that the vote was taken, that there'd be three alternates, that we would ask the three alternates.
Okay.
I don't know how other people feel, but I feel like.
Well, I, I think that, you know, I think you guys are going to discuss and come up with the appropriate solution, but I do think that if there is an open seat and you have a resident that's interested in filling it, I think you guys probably need to fill that position. So we actually had four applicants. Two showed up, two didn't. One of the other two that didn't show up didn't see her email or text or whatever it was and missed the meeting. So now, do we open it back up to them as well?
Yes. I think you would treat it like it was a new, a new seat.
Right.
Because the last process was not for two seats, it was for one seat.
Correct.
So I would think you would have a new, I mean, since this is all new information, if you talk with your committee and you kind of absorb this and say, okay, our judgment is that we should proceed with, you know, as the zoning bylaw specifies, I would think that's what you'd do.
Okay.
I would think, I mean.
No, I, I think that's how you have to proceed. Just so that we're clear on how many picks we get, you know, because like I said, the other, there were two other applicants.
And there may be more applicants after they hear the discussion this evening.
Correct.
It's hard to know. They might not have submitted their name because there was only one slot, and so it's sort of a hard counterfactual. So I think.
Like the idea of opening it up again and having more volunteer activity forums looked at and having another interview process for that other position. And then that way the board can make their recommendation to us.
Sure.
I think we're all kind of processing this on the fly, but that, that seems right to me. It seems like basically, from our point of view, a, a new seat was created and we only learned about it after you'd gone through your process.
Right.
And so I, I think we would treat it as a new seat.
Okay.
Megan?
Megan O'Callaghan, 44, salt to Mr. Dervin. If I can just say, you know, I, I know the information about the second or technically third seat is new information that I brought to your attention yesterday.
Yeah.
When I came across it and was validated by Kristen. I think I'd suggest that, I know it's not all new information, and there were two other applicants that were given the opportunity to come before the ZBA. They're actually given that opportunity for two consecutive meetings and didn't show up for either one. So I think that's important to keep in mind. But I think it's also important to keep in mind that if we had all known this information six months ago, when that seat opened up, to be unfortunate to have, would anything have been different? The seat still would have been this, this open on the website, except there would have been a second one instead of just one. People interested still would have submitted, and I think you have to ask yourself, would we have gotten more than four applicants? And would that information have caused any of the other two to show up at either of those two meetings that they didn't show up to? And I understand it's new information, but it's completely within this board's purview to decide who to appoint and who not to appoint. And I know it's practice to let the subservient board, for lack of a better word, make that determination, make a recommendation, but it's ultimately up to you. And I think, and I'm, you know, try to be careful about what I say because it's a little bit personal now to me. But I think you need to keep all that in mind. Ask yourself, would this have gone any differently had we known there was a third seat available six months ago? And I don't think it would have. And I think if you ask yourselves, I think you'll all come to the same conclusion. So do the right thing.
Thank you. I guess for me, there's a couple of factors. One is, I don't know. The factor I find most compelling is that, is that by practice, we react to the specific recommendations and we have one specific recommendation in front of us. And I think by, we're, we're sort of usurping part of the, not the authority, because we have the authority, but part of the traditional role by, by basically saying, rather than having that committee deliberate and come to a conclusion and recommendation, we're going to, I would feel more awkward imposing that. So I'm, anyway, that's, that's sort of what my thinking is. So where I'm still at is we move on what's in front of us tonight and give the, the ZBA the opportunity to absorb this new information and basically move into conducting a new process.
I also just want to add, we only have one name for you to consider on the agenda this evening. You don't necessarily act on things that are not on the agenda for people's names. We like to give them notice, invite them in to speak. So just that for your consideration as well. Of course, Megan is here this evening. I'm just talking very broadly.
In general.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, unless there's any other comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, I'll just, I mean, real quick, Megan, I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I do think you need to put the faith of doing the right thing in the hands of first, the ZBA. These are the, the group that you potentially want to work with, so we certainly want to have them have a discussion and make a recommendation, even though, to put it out, we could overrule. You've heard from all of us, I think it's still a good practice to allow that board to have at least a thought of how, what's happened, right? This is all very new news, and to give them an opportunity to react, and let's see how things go. And with that, I'll make a motion to support the, I already lost it, the, the request to appoint Andrew Spanos to the alternate seat for a term to expire on June 30th, 2027.
Just a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item up is the nine twenty-five minutes for approval for at least regular session October 14th and October 28th. Any comments related to minutes?
No favor, too.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Super. Board reports and updates.
So we've been filling out the board and committee update calendar, you were able to hear from the economic development committee at your October meeting, we do have the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee coming on November 25th, as well as.
So it's next week?
That's, next week. We also have the recycling committee coming, just because there is going to be a conversation on pay as you throw, I don't necessarily know if you'd like to receive a full update from them, or like if you've even alerted them that they'd be giving anything, so.
They'll, they'll be here, but not for an update, they'll be listening.
They'll be here, so DEI will be here for an update, and I believe some requests on changes the committee make up and some appointments, potentially Noel, you're our liaison, so you can get more information than I do, and then we've lined up some other boards and committees on, on that calendar.
Good, so Kristen, thank you for sending out earlier the, the charter language for the DEI committee. Maybe we can send it to everybody.
Yeah, I didn't send it to.
Well, we were having, Noel was as liaison and I were having conversations, but my suggestion is to send it to everybody, because I think part of the conversation with the DEI committee is going to be, are there areas of focus that we and our colleagues in the school committee, because they're duly appointed, have as areas of potential interest for, like a shared project for the coming year? Yeah.
So how is that going to work? So they come here and they sort of say, hey, we're thinking of doing acts, or they then, so they get our input potentially, and then they're going to go to school committee and give the same pitch, and then like, how does it all sort of tie in? Do they have to have a dual school committee select board to sort of say yes or no to their request?
Typically, we'd have a joint session to actually approve a change in the charter.
And the school committee will be with us for a joint session next meeting, because they'll also be in for the, approving the PPA, potentially for the Blanchard Middle School group.
Does this all happen on the 25th?
Yes. We've got a busy meeting right before this committee.
So, yeah, I see, so I think the, the hope is we'll have a little bit of, we, we may not finalize anything in that meeting.
Sure, sure, sure.
It seems like we'd like to trend towards, hey, we've got a shared area of interest for focus in the coming year on personnel or recruiting diversity, or like some, something that fits within the charter. So anyway, we'll, we'll get to the charter, Kristen, if you wouldn't mind, we'll get to the charter language, you can just reflect on what the charter language is, and then if you've got something you think would be a valuable area of.
Does the school committee know that we'll be potentially discussing this on the 25th?
I've talked about Catherine, but, and Catherine got the charter language.
Yes, I sent it to her today.
Okay, so she, she does have that.
And then I anticipate the clean energy and sustainability committee to be in, in December, with a few updates and requests. We're trying to keep your December meeting a little bit lighter, you have the budget document on the 9th, and then we do have a meeting on 12/23, potentially, so.
12/23?
I know, well, you can decide if we want to have it, have it virtually, not have it at all, keep it light, move it up.
25th of November and the 25th, who came up with the schedule?
Well, the holidays fall in plenty, plenty of times this year, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments for board and committee updates? Okay, time is important.
Okay, slew of MOUs, purchase orders and contracts, primarily from the special town meeting, but because of other timing as well. The first is to approve and sign the MOU for the statewide contract BEH 119 Road Salt with Eastern Salt for the purchase of Road Salt at $75.71 per ton for the 2025, 2026 winter season as requested by the public works department. I do want to caveat that, is I did sign that in advance of your approval, because the state had us on a very intense deadline, I did confirm with the chair on that, this is just for, for the final select board approval. Then we have purchase orders for our tracer drone technologies for Vantage Robotic, Vesper UAV, which I believe stands for a drone in short, in the amount of $8,850 as requested by the police department. Tri-County Contractor Supply Inc. for a used compact loader with snow removal attachments in the amount of $38,500 as requested by the public works department. That was a capital item that was approved at a special town meeting, and I'll go into contracts unless there's any questions.
Yes.
The next is for Dodson and Flinker for peer review services for the 219 Littleton Road project, which is also the Westford Regency for the MBTA police project, in the amount of $12,729 as requested by the land use management department. Weston and Sampson for engineering services for the Stony Brook Dam in the amount of $259,720 as requested by the engineering department. Weston and Sampson for engineering services for the Navnassett Dam in the amount of $262,650 as requested by the engineering department. TEC Inc. for construction phase services on the Boston Road project in the amount of $114,500 as requested by the engineering department. Beta Group for our pavement management update services in the amount of $47,500 as requested by the engineering department. TEC for designer services on the Colonial Drive Bridge rehab project in the amount of $95,000 as requested by the engineering department. Lockton Companies for our health insurance consultant services in the amount of $48,000 as requested by the health insurance trust, they voted last week to recommend that to the board. And finally, a vendor to be determined, do we have a vendor?
We do have a vendor, it is Industrial Boiler.
Industrial Boiler for the emergency replacement for the Will McLean boiler at the broth school in the amount of.
We still want to keep it as not to exceed 50,000.
Fifty thousand.
The highest, the lowest quote we have right now is 39, but we're verifying that that covers weekend hours, we're trying to minimize disruption of programs.
Any questions about the?
I have a question.
Kristen, kind of, yeah?
The pavement management update service, is that from Grove Street?
No, every year, we contract with Beta, they assess all of our roadways and give them a grade and a score, so any roadways that score under, I'll just use 70% as an example, we review and put that into our chapter 90 paving program for the next year. So they are grading our roadways, relates to the condition, stormwater, and all of that, so it's an ongoing item.
Right.
I'm happy to give a quick update, that Grove Street got their curbing in today, the paving is going in on Thursday, that's all covered under our water enterprise, because it was a water main break, and we're also recouping insurance costs for that work as well.
And what about insurance claims on other, on, were there two homes?
Two claims for two homes with water damage, mostly exterior, but some garage damage as well, interior garage damage.
Thank you.
But thank you to the team, they did an amazing job.
Yeah.
Yeah, the pictures were shocking.
That was great.
Any other questions on purchasers or contracts? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions on correspondence tonight?
Nope.
I'll entertain a motion to wait, reading of correspondence.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Some move.